Call on you. I'll call on you when I call on you. Yeah, it's great. Good evening, everyone. We would like to welcome everyone to the Estill County High School this March 17th. Happy St. Patrick's Day. This is a special cardboard meeting. We hope everyone got the opportunity to take a tour of our ATC and our baseball softball complex. So we'd like to welcome everyone. We would like to start by saying our pledge. And I would like to call on Ms. Wilson to introduce our cadets that are here with us this evening. So Ms. Wilson, if you would like to introduce them, then we will stand and have our pledge.
Direction of Colonel Chris Wicker. And so in front of you tonight presenting the U.S. Rifle Guard is Joshua Rogers. The U.S. flag is Hunter Mays. The Kentucky flag is Peyton Henderson. And the Kentucky Rifle Guard is Everett Burrow.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arm! Five, three, four, four.
Thank you. I would like to remind everyone there is a sign-in sheet if anyone would like to sign in. Mr. Saylor, do we have any revisions to our agenda?
I think you're gonna have to pull it up to you. Jeremy, can you check the sound for us? It's not picking up or something.
My green light's on.
I've got a bigger mouth than you.
Okay.
Use that.
Let me trade these ones.
Sorry. She asked if there was any revisions. This is a special call meeting, so there cannot be any revisions in terms of action items. There are a couple information items I've given the board that will have nothing to do with any type of approved business tonight.
First on our agenda, we have our mountain movers. And I'd like to ask Ms. Mallory York to come forward and present our mountain movers.
Okay, this is always an exciting time of our board meeting where we get to recognize our mountain movers. And these are individuals and community organizations that help us be the school system that we are. I'd like to start out with our community mountain mover to begin with tonight. And our community mountain mover this month is Backstreet Grub. And Aaron Abney is the owner. Aaron, are you with us? I don't know if Aaron's not here, but just real quick, Backstreet Grub is a local restaurant owned and operated by Aaron Abney and his family. The Abney family moved back to Estill County from McAllister, Oklahoma in 2018. In McAllister, Aaron started the Ice House.
Call on you.
Sure, call on you.
I'll call on you when, I'll call on you. Yeah, it's great.
You're good to go?
Good evening, everyone. We would like to welcome everyone to the Estill County High School this March 17th. Happy St. Patrick's Day. This is a special cardboard meeting. And we hope everyone got the opportunity to take a tour of our ATC and our baseball, softball complex. So, we'd like to welcome everyone. We would like to start by saying our pledge. And I would like to call on Ms. Wilson to introduce our cadets that are here with us this evening. So, Ms. Wilson, if you would like to introduce them, and then we will stand and have our pledge.
Direction of Colonel Chris Wicker. And so, in front of you tonight, presenting the U.S. Rifle Guard is Joshua Rogers. The U.S. Flag is Hunter Mays. The Kentucky Flag is Peyton Henderson. And the Kentucky Rifle Guard is Everett Burrow.
Freeze and arm.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arm. Vote. One, three, four, four.
Thank you. I would like to remind everyone, there is a sign-in sheet if anyone would like to sign in. Mr. Saylor, do we have any revisions to our agenda?
I think you're gonna have to pull it up to you. Jeremy, can you check the sound for us? It's not picking up or something.
My green light's on.
I've got a bigger mouth than you.
Okay.
Use that.
Let me trade these one.
Sorry. She asked if there was any revisions. This is a special call meeting, so there cannot be any revisions in terms of action items. There are a couple of information items I've given the board that will have nothing to do with any type of approved business tonight.
First on our agenda, we have our mountain movers. And I'd like to ask Ms. Mallory York to come forward and present our mountain movers.
Okay, this is always an exciting time of our board meeting where we get to recognize our mountain movers. And these are individuals and community organizations that help us be the school system that we are. I'd like to start out with our community mountain mover to begin with tonight. And our community mountain mover this month is Backstreet Grub. And Erin Abney is the owner. Erin, are you with us? I don't know if Erin's not here, but just real quick, Backstreet Grub is a local restaurant owned and operated by Erin Abney and his family. The Abney family moved back to Estill County from McAllister, Oklahoma, in 2018. In McAllister, Erin started the Ice House Youth Project and was the City of McAllister's Business Board Youth Representative. Always having an entrepreneurial spirit, Erin opened Backstreet Grub. The Abney family said it is good to be home, and we just want to give back. They do so by sponsoring our mountain mover program along with the Estill County Athletic Teams and tournament sponsorships. They've also worked in flood victim relief and supplies, first responders, and other recognition programs. They're a food bank sponsor. They donated student school supplies, supported the Estill County Animal Shelter. They also host community events such as Christmas in July, Community Halloween Block Party, Small Business Saturday, Character Days, and toy giveaways for children, and so much more. All paid for, our all-paid staff of Backstreet are either high school or college students. And we're very appreciative of Backstreet Grub, and we're very appreciative of their sponsorship for our certified and classified mountain movers. So, let's give them a hand.
And I would like to add something as well. Is my mic on? I think it is. Okay, I've had the awesome opportunity to work at Backstreet Grub the past two years they've been open. Backstreet Grub offers a lot of awesome opportunities for our youth in this community. So, congratulations, Erin, if you're seeing this.
Steven, turn up number one.
Hello? Hello?
Number one.
Hello? Can everybody hear? Okay.
We traded out again.
Yeah, I'll just kinda talk the loudest you can.
Okay.
Did everybody hear Mallory what she had say? Okay, good deal. Thank you. Let's start with our classified mountain mover then, our next recognition. And that is Ms. Patty Embry. She's the Estill Springs Kitchen Manager. Is Patty here with us?
There she is.
Patty began working for the Estill County Schools in 2005 as a substitute cook. She was hired full-time in 2007 at the middle school and remained there until she began her work as a kitchen manager at Estill Springs in 2021. Patty says she loves her job and couldn't imagine doing anything else. She feels very lucky to have a job where she gets love poured out on her every day by the kids because they tell the cookers how beautiful they are and how much they love their food. Patty says she is so thankful to be the mountain mover, but her girls move mountains every day, and she could not do it without him. So, Patty, congratulations, and we're glad to have you.
We need to get a picture. We need to get a picture.
Hold on Patty, and let's get a picture.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least is our certified mountain mover, and that's Ms. Elena Beckler with Estill County Middle School Language Arts. And I don't know that she's here, but I'll go ahead and read. Elena has taught language arts at the Estill County Middle School since 1999. She began her career in the district at the central office as a Title I Secretary. Elena says that she loves teaching middle school because middle school students have a unique sense of humor. She also said that she loves the staff at ECMS because they work as a team. So, congratulations to Ms. Beckler, and congratulations to all of our mountain movers tonight.
So, I think-
And thank you, Mallory.
Yeah. So, we're gonna go out of order, right? We're gonna go to Data Scene next.
Yeah, let's have Brian.
Okay. At this time on our agenda, we have a presentation from Data Scene concerning their apprenticeship program. Brian Gupta is going to give us an update. Is he here with us?
Yes, here comes Brian. Brian, thank you for being here tonight. And these gentlemen here, we're here to recognize them tonight. Turn your mic on, Brian.
How's that?
Yeah, good deal.
All right. We're an organization that's based in Louisville, Kentucky, and we have 48 school districts participating in the program statewide. Estill County is a new, one of our newer counties to the Data Scene program. The original premise of the opportunity was an education and workforce development opportunity focused on research and commercialization. School districts that participate in the program earn training through staff opportunities and, or earn computers through staff training and industry standard IT certification. The Mac, the Apple computers that have been provided in the district have been earned. Those have been funded through the General Assembly. And those computers, even when the students and teachers are using them in the daytime and especially at night, they are engaged in cancer drug discovery for the University of Louisville's Brown Cancer Center, which is very important to all of us in Kentucky, given the high amount of cancer occurrence that we have. That opportunity has allowed us to bring additional things to the district, and that's one of the things, that's what I'm excited to share with you tonight. Data Scene in 2020 submitted a grant to the Appalachian Regional Commission to expand a Department of Labor-approved Registered Apprenticeship for Information Technology. This is a two-year, three-phase program providing adult-level training and certification to rising juniors and seniors in our eastern Kentucky counties. This grant competed against 176 other applications from 13 Appalachian Regional Commission states and was one of five selected for the state of Kentucky. Students that participate in this, and I wanna say that Kayden and Zach are very special students in this, and Estill County is very special, and the fact that you all have two apprentices. This registered apprenticeship provides coursework, on-the-job training, and mentoring as a part of the two-year training and apprenticeship. These students, and appreciate you all's opportunity to approve this program, they're actually employees of the Estill County School District. So, they're helping Mr. Simpson and his staff support technology and learn about technology as a part of preparing them, both Zach and Kayden, to move into the workforce. We're excited to have them in the program, and we've enjoyed the feedback that we've been getting from Mr. Simpson as a part of their work. You all started in the fall, right? So, they've started in the fall as a part of this, moving into an in-demand workforce sector where currently in the state of Kentucky, we have 32,000 unfilled IT jobs across the state. And given the skills that both of these gentlemen will be engaging in, they will be able to move into the workforce should they choose upon completion, as they finish their senior year, into jobs that pay somewhere between $65,000 and $100,000 a year, which is a lot better than probably my first job or any of you all's first jobs in training. I was, I worked at a Piggly Wiggly, so this is, this is a lot better. But currently in the state of Kentucky, we are paying 76% above the national average in many instances for IT. I think we all understand how important IT has been to us and how we do things over the last two years, and that's only gonna increase. As a part of the opportunity, they're being paid through, as being employees through the school district. They actually earned laptops that are being paid for as a part of the ARC grant that they can do both their schoolwork with and also work for the technology department. And those are laptops that as they complete the program, they will be able to carry them on to college should they choose, or into the workforce. And the skillsets that they are learning as a part of being employees in the Estill County School District, these are IT skillsets that they could carry on into community healthcare, hospitals, banking, state and local government. These are all places where IT is there every day and sometimes the workers are not. So, we're excited about having Kayden Godby and Zach Reisman as a part of the program, and we wanted to recognize them tonight. And I promised them they wouldn't have to talk tonight, but that's on you all. But we're very proud of them, and we thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you.
And just so you know, Mr. Simpson updates me all the time, and I know they're doing a fantastic job, and we're excited about the program. We're also looking forward to even partnering with Data Scene even further. Because of some of the training and leadership in our district, we have, we were able to obtain a Mac lab at West Irvin Elementary School. And our goal is, as soon as the funding is approved in the legislature, which is in the budget currently, we'll be providing another Mac lab at Estill Springs Elementary as well. So, we're very fortunate to have a relationship with Brian and thankful for Mr. Simpson and his staff. And so, thank you again, guys. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I think we have a Gear Up presentation.
And ladies, we're glad to have you all. I don't know, Mr. Flynn, did he leave you all on your own today?
I think so.
Yeah, we have Sandra here though.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Watson, and I am one of the program managers with the Gear Up Opportunity Grant. And so, we're really excited to be here tonight to share with you all some awesome stuff that your girls have been doing here in Estill County. Just for the folks that don't know a little bit about Gear Up, so we are a federally-funded grant. And what we do is we work with students. We start with them in their sixth and seventh grade, and we follow them through their high school graduation, and we do activities with them to get them prepared for college and career. So, this is our year four of our current grant, and so, the girls have been doing a lot of great things. And so, I'm gonna kinda turn it over to them and let them introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about what they've been doing this year. But we're really excited to be partnering with you all as always. And anytime if you all have questions or concerns or anything from Gear Up, feel free to reach out, and we'll be happy to help you all out any way we can. So, ladies, I'll turn it over to you.
We have a presentation too, so we thought it might be easier to like see that part of it as well, because it's a lot. So, he is gonna pull that down. But first, I'm Victoria Barnett, and I am the Math Academic Interventionist. Tricia Woolens is outside, meaning our Gear Up Family Night table. She is the Reading Academic Interventionist.
And I'm Kayla Tuttle. I am the College and Career Navigator here at the high school.
And I'm Kristin Kirkland. I'm also a College and Career Navigator here at the high school as well.
We won't take a lot of your time, but it's just easier to see it on there because there's a lot of stuff. Jeremy, ours is just the power point. Wrong one. I was like, goodness, he's, he's been fired up. Okay. So, this is just kind of our introduction. You can go to the next one. You can flip to the next one because we've already kind of introduced ourselves. Okay, so, the first one is about our academic impact. So, first, as academic interventionists, we push into the classrooms a lot. That's really where most of our time is. We're going into the math classrooms and the English classrooms all the time on a daily basis. So, and then we also meet with individual students or do small group pullouts and bring them back to our room and work with those students for individualized targeted instruction. But some of the other things that we've done, we had Tammy Harold, which is one of our Gear Up STEM coordinators, come in and work on STEM Day with our, all of our science classrooms. And she did all kinds, she did a physical science activity with all of our groups, and our kids really liked it. There's some pictures up there of that. We had our 4H Extension Office, Taylor Miles, I couldn't think of her last name, come in, and she did sheep eyeball dissections with all of our groups, and they loved it. We have a monthly book club that we do where they do book studies. We had Pi Day activities this week, and our kids were really excited about it because that was something we haven't really got to do in a long time. So, and I was really excited about it because I love Pi Day. So, we also are responsible for the CERT assessments, and this year, we actually did a boot camp with our students where each of our subject areas were responsible for teaching a little bit about the CERT. So, it kind of emphasized the importance. We had the students set goals also with the CERT tests to help them kind of reach their goal, and we recognized those students afterwards when they met those goals. This year, we are really excited because we are providing the mastery, ACT Mastery Prep Boot Camp for all of our sophomores, and we are paying for the ACT Spring Assessment for all of our sophomores. We're doing the online version, so we're really excited about that and looking forward to doing that with our sophomores this year. And then, last year, we had a STEM camp that we did with our students that was a full week, and this year, we're looking at a three-day one to incorporate with some of the other camps that we're doing. So, that one.
So, as I said, I'm a College and Career Navigator, and part of what we do is we have a leadership club, leadership team, and they do many things, but a lot of the things that we do is a community impact. Over Christmas, we got to go to the fairgrounds. We took a group, and they got to help with the Elizabeth Wick Christmas party. I think altogether, they packed about 500 bags that was given out that day. So, that was, and then they came back and helped pass those out as well. Just last week, we took a group to EKU to attend a student leadership conference, where they got to learn some activities and different things to help them with that. During Valentine's Day, we got a group together and made Valentine's Day for the nursing homes. I'm pretty sure half of Estill County did. Tomorrow, we actually are having a blood drive here at the high school as well. And then, every month, we do a family engagement night. If you've seen the flower pots out front, that was what this month's family engagement night was. It's usually a meal and an activity, a STEM-related activity. And then, we also have Gear Up Week during the week, one week during the year to promote Gear Up and just kind of give back to the community in different ways.
So, also, being a College and Career Navigator, we try to focus on preparing students for post-secondary education and also career exploration. So, some of our post-secondary education stuff that we've been doing, at first, we had to kind of focus more on virtual side of things. So, we have done like UCLA Virtual Tours. We've done MSU Georgetown right at the beginning of the school year. But the past couple months, we've actually been able to go on physical college tours. So, we've gone to EKU. We took right at, I think, 60, 65 kids to EKU, got to tour that campus. We have had a lot of college guest speakers come in, so MSU, also EKU individual departments got to come in and talk with those students. We recently went to UK College of Ag, focused on the ag industries, and then went over to the Bluegrass Stockyards in Lexington, got to tour that and see and explore careers based around the ag industry. Next, we're going to BCTC. We're focusing on the skills trade sides with that field trip. And then, we also have the Kentucky Welding Institute that we are going to as well. So, mostly focusing on those students that are interesting in the welding field. So, each month, we try to highlight a career, and we try to tie in those colleges and post-secondary education based around those careers. Jeremy, I'm ready. So, this is our career exploration. Like I just said, we try to focus each month on a career pathway- Like I just said, we try to focus each month on a career pathway, and then that's kind of how we do our family nights, how we do our emphasis on college and post-secondary explorations. So we have, actually, next week is our Career Day. We have invited, we actually now, we need to correct that, it's over 30 businesses that are local, so business and industries professionals, they're coming in, speaking with the students. So we have some local community partners, and then there's some outside of Richmond and Lexington that are coming in as well. We recently did the ag industry, where we went to the Bluegrass Stockyards. We've had guest speakers about entrepreneurship come in and talk with our students, and then the monthly career spotlights. And then, lastly, is the summer STEM camp opportunity that we're doing. It's three days this summer that we are going to be exploring careers based around STEM, and the kids get to do some cool, fun, hands-on activities with that. Oh, yes, college road trip. So also, in conjunction with our college summer camps, we are doing a three-day summer college road trip where we're taking students, some targeted students, out to Western Kentucky. And we are doing three college tours and exploring the Corvette Museum and a few other attractions. So we'll be on the road for three days, but there are places that we are not able to take our students during the school day, but we'll be able to take them over in the summer. So that's pretty much Gear Up in literally three minutes. If you guys have questions, please feel free to reach out to really any of us about Gear Up and what we do.
At this time, we'd like to welcome our Estill County Middle School to the stage.
All right, thank you. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Saylor and the school board members for the opportunity to share some of the good things that are going on in our Library Media Center this year. At the middle school, it says we have many positive programs in place. Several of these programs are led by our Library Media Specialist, Shawna Murray. The Library Media Center has been very active this year. Ms. Murray has continued to build a literate community by encouraging students to be lifelong learners in her weekly sixth, seventh, and eighth grade library classes. Some of the activities aimed at encouraging independent reading that have been successful this year, and some of those would be blind dates with books, scavenger hunts to navigate the Destiny Program, author studies and book clubs. Students and teachers have been participating in book clubs each month of the school year. And currently, there are 31 students and eight teachers participating in a March Madness reading competition. If any of you would be interested in leading a book club, I think that you and the students would both love that. In eighth grade, Ms. Murray teaches a newscast class that produces a news video each week. This class promotes public speaking, media literacy, confidence, and empathy. In seventh grade, Ms. Murray teaches an exploratory rotation that focuses on creating a monthly newspaper that is printed in the Citizen's Voice and Times. I hope that you have seen it. This class promotes research skills, writing skills, and critical thinking. And after school, there are several students who participate in the yearbook club. This club is available for all students to apply, reflect real-life practices. There are three seventh grade and four eighth grade students who are actively working in this club this year. The students are using their problem-solving, reading, writing, and media literacy skills to produce the school yearbook. The students in all of these activities have worked hard and learned many skills that will serve them well in life. I hope that they have had some fun, too. They have prepared a group of newscasts that you're going to see and a sample of the newspaper and the yearbook to share with you. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Murray, and this is some of their yearbook crew. We had some that couldn't be here tonight due to sports. So, come on up.
Thank you all for having us. I'm very proud of these students. Mason is one of our seventh graders. He's a newspaper writer. He was in the newspaper twice this year, and he does a lot of work for our yearbook, especially the writing. He's a great writer. Abby is in my newscast class. She is very creative. She is great at what she does, and we're trying to lure her into the yearbook crew as well. And then Julie is one of our new recruits, and she's gotten something like 13 pages done for our yearbook already, so she's a great recruit. We're lucky to have her. If you all would, please, pass these out for me real quick. We have samples of the newspaper that we've done this year, and I think we're ready for the video, Jeremy. Guys.
Welcome to Newscast on February 25th. Our first segment coming out today is going to be music competition.
In today's segment, we will talk about the National Guard. I'll be answering questions like, what is the National Guard? How do you join, and what do they do? Hopefully, today's segment will give you all the information you need to know about the National Guard. The National Guard is a special part of the US military that answers to both state governors and the president. In some instances, how leaders have used the Guard has generated controversy, particularly when responding to civil unrest. To be able to join the National Guard, you have to meet a few requirements before joining. You have to be between the ages of 17 and 35. You also must be a US citizen or permanent resident, and must be at least a junior in high school, or have a high school diploma, or a GED certificate. Lastly, you have to achieve a minimum score of 36 on the ASVAB test. The Guard usually responds to statewide emergencies such as natural disasters. An example of this is that hundreds of National Guard members were deployed to respond to the historical wildfires that erupted through the western states, including California, Oregon, and Washington State in 2020. The Guard prepares every year for these kind of events to occur. I hope this gave you some general information about the National Guard, and we hope you better understand the Guard. If you have any questions, come to the local authorities, you can do more research.
This is the put a finger down challenge. Put a finger down if you can talk clearly without looking at the screen or your hands. Put a finger down if you have a favorite pencil. Put a finger down if you have a favorite teacher or class. Put a finger down if you have a favorite cafeteria lunch. Put a finger down if you have ever used your phone in the bathroom. Put a finger down if you have ever forgotten about a test or quiz. Put a finger down if you have a favorite book. Put a finger down if you have never dressed in PJs for a Google Meet.
I never forgot on them things.
Put a finger down if you have ever checked your school email. And put a finger down if you have never laughed at a corny teacher joke.
Today, I'm with Ms. Franklin, and she's retiring. And we just want to thank you for being such a great teacher, and is there anything you want to say to the kids?
Well, thank you, and I just want to say it's been a great time here at the middle school. I've been a teacher since 1993, and I'm sad to leave all my friends, and I love everybody, and thank you all very much.
We definitely miss you.
Now, we're going to be changing gears.
All right. One last thing, I did want to give credit to Ms. Williams, our former principal, who had this vision for our library center and all of these great programs for our students. So we thank you, Ms. Williams, and we thank Ms. Murray for her hard work, and we just hope that these programs will continue to get stronger each year. Thank you.
Y'all going to come up front?
They just made, guys. They want us down front so we can watch them.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Josh Yost, Principal of Estill County High School, and we're also very thankful to the board and Mr. Saylor for the opportunity to host you all tonight and to present. You've got to see a lot of the awesome things that our students are doing here at the high school tonight, from our ROTC program, to our students with DataSeam, to the wonderful ladies with Gear Up and the opportunities they're providing for our students. And to close out the high school portion of the presentation tonight, we would like for you to have the first public performance since the National Anthem at the football game, I do believe.
Yeah, it was too cold to be outside.
Too cold to be outside for that one, but. Ms. Luanne Cavassos, our choir director, was our certified mountain mover last month. And for closing out the high school portion of the presentation tonight, she has brought her wonderful choir with her, and they're going to perform for you all now.
Before I call my excellent students up here to the stage, I just wanted to say a big thank you to both my Estill County Middle School and the Estill County High School staff that I have. This is my first year, actually, as a teacher, as well as my first year here in Estill County, and I absolutely love it here. I'm so thankful for the opportunities to make music with my students every single day. And thank you to my choir kids over there who always put in their big game every single day that I have them in class. All right, we are so excited to share some music with you. We're singing a piece called "We Walk in Love."
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, everyone, it looks like we have some really exciting things going on within our school district, and I want to just say thank you to all of our students and staff and teachers for being here with us. Next on our list, we have a facilities and construction update.
Katie, you up?
I do not have the agenda with me. I'm sorry, I missed that.
You're talking about Estill Springs ester renovation and addition.
Yeah, so we are busy at work. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, that's awesome. So, we're busy at work on Estill Springs. And this month, we are here with our early, what we call an early site package. It's phase one of the project. Now that we have entered the construction document phase of the project, this is the last time the board will see the work that we put together on the site. This is the parent loop in the back, as well as the memorial park and the new sort of outdoor classroom space that we have going up behind the school at Estill Springs. The board is actually hopefully considering to approve those documents for us so that we can send those on to KDE for their approval and get that portion of the project out to bid. We're still working hard on the addition portion, the building portion of that project. And we should be, you all should be seeing that here in the next couple of months, construction documents for the building. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have about Estill Springs. I think we did send you a BG3 that had costs associated with the site phase of the project and drawings and a specification index.
Have you guys had an opportunity to look at the drawings? It's pretty much what we've discussed in the past. And I believe, Peter, we need to approve construction documents first.
That would be...
And the BG3.
Yeah, that would be fine. And the BG3 is probably, this time around, is just for a part of the project. So, there's no need to revise the BG1 at this point in time. This is just a BG3 for this first phase.
So, I would like to ask for a motion for approval of the construction documents for the Estill Springs project. Sheila Samples makes a motion and Brian Covey makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Like to call for a vote at this time, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0. Then do I ask for a second motion for the BG3?
Yes, that would be great.
So, I need a motion to approve a BG3. Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Like to call for a vote at this time, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, 5-0.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And what this does, Peter, my understanding is it allows you to go ahead, get the bid documents ready, and we're getting closer to going to bid, correct?
Correct. Once KDE approves the construction documents for the project, they're actually still under review of the DDs, but they'll, John Gilbert at KDE is aware that we're looking to get this work done over the summer. And he's working on expediting reviews for us on this one and a lot of our projects that we're doing here with you guys this spring. So, once he approves this early phase one site package, if you will, then we will have the approval of KDE to put the project out, advertise for the project and put the project out to bid.
Thank you. So, next on our agenda, we have the West Urban Pavement Improvement Project.
So, on Tuesday, we opened one bid for the West Urban Pavement Improvements Project. And in review of that bid, which did come in a little bit higher than the projected construction budget for the project, it came in at $439,900. It was from Tri-State Construction and Enterprise out of Northern Kentucky. And our construction budget for the project was $370,000. You know, we are in a really crazy time for construction and contractors themselves are sort of being pressed for how long it will take to get materials, vendors who, you know, are gonna hold on to their prices for a certain amount of time. So, we felt like this bid was a strong bid, came very close. It's about 18% over what we had estimated a couple of months ago. And in this current bidding climate, we feel like that is something that we should be able to recommend to you guys to move forward with if you can. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I should say, we've spent the last couple of days working really hard to make sure that Tri-State, they're a pretty good firm out of Northern Kentucky. They have three or four different branches. And they have done work that we feel like qualifies them to do this parking lot and sidewalks and all of the pavement improvements out at West Urban.
Hey, guys, so really, you've got a decision to make here in terms of the project itself for the
Yeah.
construction of the parking lot is about $69,000, I believe, over what was budgeted to begin with. You also had an alternate that was bid as part of this project, which was for the lighting.
Correct.
And the lighting portion of this project was approximately $19,000. And you remember, we pulled the lighting out just in case we encountered sort of what we did encounter in this particular case. I will, I'm glad to do whatever the board wishes or desires to do on this. I would tell you that I believe that probably when that parking lot will be in use, it's probably gonna be during times that will be like open house or it will be some, you know, back-to-school nights and it'll be during daylight hours. And just because of the increased costs, and remember, we're using capital outlay cash to pay for this project. It was part of a capital funds request. And we're already $69,000 over budget. And of course, why is that? Fuel cost, blacktop because of the oil that's necessary to help make blacktop. That's one reason we're seeing an increase in price. It would be my recommendation to you all that we would proceed and we would not take alternate one, which would be the lighting for this project. We believe that we can go out there and look at the current lighting poles. And we believe that it would be possible to maybe do some directional lighting off of the poles that are already in the parking lot that would provide lighting for that particular parking lot. Now, like I said, it doesn't matter to me, but I think just to be budget conscious right now, I think we'll be pretty tickled just to have the parking lot. And I don't know that the lighting will be that big of an issue. But now, my recommendation would be not to accept the alternate. But now, if you all want to accept the alternate, I have no problem.
So, I'm trying to remember, is there, I understand where you guys alternative ideas? Is there lighting over there now?
There is lighting in the upper parking.
I mean, on the lower part, though?
Not in the lower.
No, not on the lower part.
Which the lower is farther away from the school.
Right, I understand. I was trying to think, you know, if you're having to run lines or anything later, you know, just throwing out, you know, things that you have to run. It'd be a horrible thing to have to run lines under the pavement that's already down. That's the thing I'm thinking about.
Yeah, I think if you're going to do the lighting, if you want to do it, and again, I am not opposed to doing it, that will put us about somewhere in the neighborhood of $88,000 sort of over projected cost. But I'm happy to do either way. You are correct, if we don't do the lighting now, it's not the fact that it couldn't be done later, there could be light poles put on the outside of the parking lot. And we could bring electricity out of the bottom portion of the building. That's the lower floor, which I believe is the third grade wing right now. We could actually do that at a later date if we wanted to. And you would not have to cut up the pavement in order to do that. I don't believe, there might be some areas you might have to drill under some pavement. But I think it would be possible, don't you, Peter?
Yes.
So, that $439,930, that is with the lighting?
Actually, that is not. That is without the lighting. That was the base bid. I apologize, there was one alternate and, Mr. Saylor, I think it was $15,000. I think I included the bid tab, I hope, in the letter that I sent you all. It should be page two, if, I hope it's on there. And it should list the alternate amount.
$15,302 is the lighting cost.
Correct.
And we'll do whichever one you guys want to do.
I personally feel like if we're gonna do it, we may as well do it. I feel like that it's really hard to go back and finish up a project.
So, is this the only people who put in for the bid?
They are the only bid that we took, yes. We had a lot of interest, or more interest at the pre-bid, but only one crew came on bid day.
We could rebid it, but I think we're on a time crunch.
Well, I do, well, you know, I think it was hope that the work would get done this summer. That would certainly jeopardize that. In this particular instance, I really don't know that there would be any value to it. I really do think we are seeing prices, you know, just going up and up. And these guys came, you know, pretty close. We've tried rebidding before without a whole lot of luck. And I don't know that we're gonna get a better price on this one.
I mean, we could ride it out and then it could be even worse next time, right?
Right.
Guys, I'm going to change my recommendation. I'm gonna recommend that you go ahead and take the alternate. It's $15,000. It's not gonna break the bank in order to do it. And that way, it'll be done and finished. And I do agree with Peter with the current situation that we have in Ukraine. If that continues to go forward and there's no resolution and gas prices remain where they're at, this bid's only gonna go higher. It's not gonna go lower. We had two local people that came and looked at the project. And right now, I honestly believe that they have so much work, they couldn't fit it in. And so, I know Peter's done the reference checks on this and feel like that they're a good firm and a good company. They were very interesting and was that the pre-bid? So, I think they're excited about doing work in Estill County. And I really, I'm like Peter, we may, if things got better in the next couple of weeks, we may save $5,000 or $10,000, but we wouldn't save a whole lot. There's a lot bigger chance, I think, that it could go higher, especially if things escalate in Ukraine. So, I would change my recommendation and say, let's accept alternate one and then move forward with the entire project. It's $15,000 additional dollars.
Okay, so, first of all, do we need a motion to award the contract to them and then a motion for approval of the BG1?
So, we can talk about the BG1 probably after you award the contract.
Okay, so their first motion is to award the contract, okay. And accept alternate one. So, do I have a motion to accept the contract and award alternate one?
I'd like to make a motion to do that. And I almost, I'm sorry, I'm waiting for discussion, sorry.
So, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second by Ms. Carrie Smallwood, a first by Brian Covey. Do we have any discussion?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow protocol there. I do worry about the ongoing costs. We want this done. I mean, we do want it done. And I'm like you, I hate putting something off until tomorrow, what we can do today. That's just my opinion. Obviously, opinions are like a lot of things. I just, that's why I made the motion to go ahead and try to get that done.
Do we have any other comments? My concern was just trying to go back and finish up the project with putting wires underground, tearing up the blacktop again, trying to do some of those things. I am concerned that the cost is a lot more than what we anticipated, but I think that's the future of things to come. I think we're gonna see more of that.
Well, and I would add that it's always been our, pretty much our goal here is that we've finished every project. I was trying to be a little bit frugal. I know $15,000 isn't a lot of money, but part of our capital funds request is funding part of the phase one project at Estill Springs. So, there is a little bit of concern there. We've seen costs escalate on the high school project. And it's not the fact that we don't have the money to do it, but we also don't want to leave the cupboard bare as we move forward as well if there's things that we need. So, with that being said, I have no problem doing that. And it's been pretty much our MO that we bid a project, we complete it. There's no need to leave something sitting there if we don't need to. So, I appreciate, I want y'all to know, I'm not against the vote by any means, maybe trying to be a little bit frugal on that end, but it'd be good to finish the project, not worry about it. Somebody else will not have to worry about it. Another board down the road won't have to worry about it, so.
I think we've all always tried to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money and to make the best decisions at the time. So, I think this discussion is good. I think talking about it and talking about this situation is good. So, with all of that being said, if there's no further comments, I'd like to call for a vote. All in favor of awarding the contract and accepting alternate number one? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, 5-0.
Okay, so, on the BG1, real quickly, you guys, I didn't come prepared with two options, which is such a shame. And I'm not really sure how best to proceed. Jeff, you may need to help me. The BG1 I prepared was the recommendation not to take the alternate, so.
Will they need a BG1 before they'll move forward, Peter?
They will need a BG1 before they sign off on it, right? So, I can get something to you tomorrow. It's gonna be an additional $15,000. It does change some of the fees. If you look at that BG1, there are some fees below the line that will also be changed. It's not very many. This is a fairly simple BG1, but...
In my opinion, it would be under, if you add the $15,000, it's right now at $440,000. You're looking at something that's gonna be under $460,000 total construction cost.
I would think so, yes. Yeah, you can, the construction cost is easy. You can add the $439,900 and the $15,000. That is the construction cost. The contingency, the contingency fee will change. The AE fee will go up a little bit. We did save, by having the contractor responsible for special inspections, we were able to save $12,500 on this BG1 that was reflected in the original BG1 that the board, it actually just was included in the contractor's bid. So, that went away, so.
So, you're looking at a total project cost, guys. It's gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of $535,000. If you feel, if you feel good about that, we'll let Peter, we'll let Peter go ahead and submit the new BG1 to us tomorrow and I can forward it to you. But if you want to go ahead and give it an approval, I believe we could do that, knowing that you're approving up to $535,000 on the BG1.
Right. And also, while you finish up, I could probably fill out the BG1 and show it to people here this evening. It just takes the calculator. If that would be helpful?
If you could do that before you go?
Yep, I will do it.
And I'll tell you what, if you want to do it before you go, let's come back to it once he gives it to us, then you know the exact amount. Is that okay?
Okay, that sounds great. Yep.
And we can email it to Jeremy and Jeremy can get it to us and go from there.
Right, okay, yep.
So, we'll move on to the high school Essor Stadium restroom renovation project.
Yes, so on Tuesday, we also opened a bid for this particular project. And I'm not sure exactly what happened, but the contractor came in just, well, exceedingly high compared to our budget that we had sort of anticipated for the project. And so, we really do feel like it would be best for the board in this particular case to reject the bid and let us work on quickly finding some other options for getting this work done in the project. We were expecting a couple of other bids on this project. There was some interest at the pre-bid beyond the one bid that we got. But this one didn't come in, or we had sort of budgeted it somewhere. You all remember, I was probably here last month saying that the, with the BG3 that we presented to you guys, that we thought that this work would be about $87,000. And you can see by the bid tab that I shared with you all on page two of this letter, that it came in really much higher. And when I think about the square footage of those two restrooms and the laundry room, it is, that was a really high price for anything that we've seen, even in this market. So, I feel like it would be best to try and pursue. market. So, I feel like it would be best to try and pursue the scope in another way, possibly with a rebid, or finding, finding someone that would be interested to get the work done, so.
And I do believe in this case that the bid was way out of line with the amount of work that was there to be done. So, this one is something, yes, it needs to be done quickly, but also, the scope of this work was what, Peter, about six weeks, or something along that line, six to seven weeks?
It was, well, we gave them, we, we knew, we had them finishing up in the middle of July, so it was a little bit more than that, right? But we, we were sort of targeting having them out in a way, so that everything would be ready for that first football game.
How quick can this turn around?
Yeah, I'm not a contractor, but we, we certainly were hoping, you know, eight weeks.
No, I'm talking about how quick can the rebid turn around?
We can go back out and, and try to take bids in about a week.
My recommendation is to rebid the project based on the budget that we had and the cost that we were given. I mean, at this rate, honestly, we would not do anything to those restrooms if it's gonna cost us this much.
Okay, so I need a motion to rebid this project. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any discussion?
Can you clarify the motion? It would be to reject the current bid?
Yeah.
And to rebid.
Yes. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, five oh vote. Okay, so I guess we're down to action items, is that right?
Yes.
While Peter gets his calculator out?
While Peter gets his calculator.
Okay, so we have some action items.
Come on, Mr. White.
He's the auditor.
Does anybody have their?
Here, Mr. Sailor. Let me give you the, to give to them. Good deal. I've got, I've got an audit here for you all, and I usually, I'm already in the mode of income taxes, so if you wanna know anything, ask me a question about corporate partnerships, whatever, I'm right on cue. But this audit stuff, I had this school audit, I think, three or four months ago, so. But anyway, we're glad that we got it. Mr. Sailor, actually, when we were getting extensions for it, and you all had some issues there, he looked at me the last time, and he said, "This board meeting, I want that done." Well, I tell you what, my people have worked weekends, nights, whatever it took to get it done, because I basically am like him. We're delegators. We say, "I get it done," and they have to get it done. So, we finally did do that, so we get the state off hassling Angela back there, so that's good. So, we finally got that in, so everything is good, and one, two things I wanna basically say to you. I know I just handed you the audit, because actually, when they handed me this audit report, it was five o'clock. And so, when I got into that Irvin traffic back on the work, I was actually gonna try to get here thirty minutes early, but it couldn't get here, so, so Mr. Sailor hasn't even looked at it. But there's two, two things I wanted to tell you, is that, number one, the most important thing, you're back in compliance. You got your audit completed. The, the second thing, which is, and I told Angie this, when I went through and had all my staff working on it, they actually went through it, and even though we had quite a bit of adjustments made by a person that you all hired, individual, independent contractor, and the stuff that we had to do, actually didn't move to the point where we have to have a correction action, corrective action plan. So actually, you don't have anything that you have to respond to. And probably what's more significant than that, your, your schools are really good. Your school activity counts, and the reason we separate that is because it's decentralized. You don't account for that stuff at the central office. So, you all have always been really good at the school activity count, so there's nothing there that we actually mentioned either. So, just a delay isn't a finding, and the reason for that is, the state audit committee has in place an audit extension request. There has to be reasons, and the school district gave those reasons, and they approved those extensions. So, we actually completed the audit. They gave us, I think, Mr. Sailor, today, wasn't it? So, we've got that. So, one thing that you'll notice, when I gave you that, that independent audit report has a draft on it, and we've already notified them. And the reason for that is, I'm looking at this thing tomorrow, and so everybody has gone through it with a fine cup of corn, but I'm the one that's mainly responsible for it. So I'm gonna go through it tomorrow morning, and if I see anything, I'll make, I, I don't expect any changes, but I always look at everything before it goes out. So I look at all the work papers, make sure the audit's right. So if I put my name on it, I'm gonna make sure it's right. So we'll give that to the state tomorrow, and you should be good to go. But overall, actually, other than just the untimeliness of your audit, we, I mean, actually, everything looked good. There were just a couple of things I noticed, and just listening to this construction going on here, I mean, you guys got massive stuff going on from a building standpoint. Just me, just driving by from Richmond back to eastern part of the state, just looking at it, and that AT Center, T Center is actually awesome, I think. And I know, I grew up in Powell. Powell uses it too, so. But anyway, all these projects, and I noted them here, and I, I know you all know all that, but another thing I pointed, point out to all the school districts, you all had a thirty-three percent increase in your general fund. I'm starting to see that all over. They, of course, this money just piled into a lot of these government agencies, as well as private sector, and, and obviously, there was a need there at the time. But one of the things that I noticed on every single district that I've done, and you all know different, is on that CARES money, where, and you got another, actually, another offer, but you all have three point three four million dollars still to spend on that last offer. So, well, you actually got a little more on that second, as well as I thought, on the Esser Fund. So, I've been noticing that. So you've got quite a bit of budgeting work to do in the future, so everybody thinks bleak times are coming ahead. I, I don't necessarily believe that, but we all have to, again, hope that doesn't happen. But from a school district sample, your financial condition is really, really good. I don't have anything there that you have to have a corrective action plan. Other than the untimeliness of it, I think you're good to go. So if you all have any questions, you're welcome to ask me. I know you haven't had time to even look at it and study it. I will take that draft off and give you all copies of it, and you all will be able to go through. If you have any other questions, you can actually ask me anytime. I can even come back if you needed me to, so.
Artie, just a question to you.
Yeah.
If the board chooses, we're, we're looking forward to having a special call meeting this coming Thursday night.
Yeah.
Board will be making that decision here in a little bit. If we decide to take this and look at it and then come back and approve it next Thursday night?
That's fine.
That doesn't keep you from going ahead and filing your report?
No, no, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. And if you wanted me to come back, all you have to do is tell him, I, I don't mind one bit.
I know that we, we've had this discussion, as you know, our finance department right now, Angie is leading a complete sort of look at our financial department in terms of HR and in terms of payroll, and we, as you know, we lost two longtime employees in both of those areas. And we're trying to do some upgrades in terms of trying to bring those programs and putting systems in place to try to bring it up into the twenty, I guess, the twenty-second century.
Mm-hmm.
So we're trying our best to do that, and Angie's helping lead that work, along with Tanya as your assistant superintendent, who's leading that work. And I really feel like that we've made a lot of progress. I think we've got the right people in place. It's taken us over a year to find the correct, or the right payroll person, and that is working out wonderfully. As you know, Ms. Williams is now working in HR. You know, Mr. Willis, we needed to move him into other areas in terms of safety and compliance, in terms of some of the things that we're looking at with Esser. So I feel like we've got the right people in place. We're putting the right systems in place. And one thing Artie mentioned to you all, and this is one thing that you need to remember, when you've got the number of construction projects that you've got going on, that increases the workload and the burden on your finance department. We've kinda had that in the past. So, you put that on top of finding new people and trying to do those things. I feel like we're on the right track. I know that we're not gonna be facing this in the future. We're putting those systems in place. I don't think it's appropriate for me to ask you all to approve this tonight. I want you to be able to go home and look at it. But, you know, I'll just point, and Artie was talking about contingency and stuff like that, we actually ended up rolling, our actual balance was two point three million dollars, which was up from one point six million dollars. So we, we knew that there were some things, good things going on with the budget, but when you're torn trying to make sure that people are getting paid, you wanna make sure everybody gets their check, right? You wanna make sure that all their benefits and all those things are being done. So, it's pulled Angie away, but now she's gonna be able to get back to her old self in terms of getting focused on what her actual job is. We're not making excuses. The bottom line is, it's been really tough trying to replace those two longtime employees, but we're on the right, we're on the right track, I believe, and as your team, I can tell you this, I've known Artie for a long time. I worked with him in my former school district. If it wasn't right, he wouldn't be here today giving this to you. He trusts his people that they've looked at this, handed this to him, and told him that it is upfront, but I still don't feel comfortable telling y'all to approve it, because you just got it. So if it's okay, if it doesn't keep you from doing your report?
It doesn't, no.
Then we would go ahead and just table the approval and pick it up before the public forum next week. And we could do that at the start of that public forum. Does anybody have any questions of Artie while he's with us? And he will, he'll drive back up here. He'll come through, might have to buy him dinner if we ask him to come back quiet.
I'd take it. Well, thank you all. I appreciate it. Here you go.
Peter, did you get that? I finally got it pulled up. Okay, sorry.
And Artie, before you go, just wait just a second here, and let's, uh.
So we're gonna table that, and so it doesn't take a motion, but the next one, Ms. Donna, we would need to ask Mr. White, because it would involve him, that if we would consider approving an extension of the auditor's contract and how Mr. White to do next year's audit as well.
And we'd like to know if that's something you would be interested in doing.
Absolutely, yeah. Y'all got more than a hundred thousand?
That's about four times more, isn't it?
So I need, I need a motion. Okay, so Sheila makes a motion, Brian makes a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, you're hired.
So thank you, Artie. I appreciate it. And I know Angie will look forward to working with you again for another year.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Donna.
Next, we have consider approval of bank account changes.
We have just a couple of changes, of course. As you know, Ms. Williams moved to the central office there right about the end of January, so Mr. Burkhart is acting as the interim principal. He needs to have checks signing responsibilities, and if I don't go to the bank next week, they're gonna kill me. I've had documents up there to sign for three weeks, but Monday, Angie, you may have to rope me and tie me and take me up there. But we need to do that. And also, they wanted to make sure that on the Partners of Education account that you all approved, that account will work just like a school activity fund at the Area Technology Center, but they'll have their own bank account. And what you're approving tonight is that you're approving the following signatures on those checks would be Corey Hall, the principal, Leslie Dealey, the secretary, Angie Howe, the finance director, and myself as superintendent. But on that account, it takes one ATC person and one central office person in order for that check to be approved. And the final amount of the donated money for this school is a hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars. So that's what that account will be. That account is ready to be set up tomorrow, correct, Angie? With you all's approval, they'll have their account, and they'll be able to start using those funds. And they'll track that just like any school activity account. So it's my recommendation that we approve those two bank account changes.
Do we have a motion to approve the discussed bank account changes? Brian Covey makes a motion. Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion? Any questions? Like to call for a vote at this time? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Are we ready to?
Dee?
Estill County Middle School Student Council out-of-state travel request.
You have the travel request there in front of you. I think it is there, Student Council, as it says there. My only issue that I have is I'm just concerned about transportation personnel and having the ability to send a bus driver overnight on an overnight trip. So, I think it's good that we can get back into some of our field trips and start doing some of the things that we've done in the past. I want them to be able to go, and I think you all would as well, but I would ask you that you would approve this trip pending the availability of a driver, because we do not want to put ourselves in an issue where we cannot transport our kids. I think we can make it happen. I just don't want to, I don't wanna approve it, and then all of a sudden, something happens and something comes up that it keeps us from being able to go. But it takes an out-of-state trip, it takes you all's approval. My recommendation is to do it with that one stipulation.
Okay. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the student, Middle School Student Council out-of-state travel request. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Brian Covey makes a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
And if you're wondering, out-of-state, they're traveling across the river to go to the Derby Dinner Theater, so it doesn't matter that it's two miles out of state. You all have to approve it if it goes across state lines. No, that's all right.
As a post-middle schooler, going on that trip, it's a very fun trip.
Yep.
So, we all looked forward to it as middle school. I was gonna add that.
Yep. And then, last on our action items is to set a date for a special call meeting.
Well, I think after our board work session that we had a couple of weeks ago now, where we met with the leadership teams at West Irvin and also at Estill Springs, I think it was the consensus, sorta as we talked individually after that meeting, that you all would like to hear from parents at this point in time. I agree with that assessment. I think we need to listen to our parents, and in order to do so, we would need to schedule a, another special call meeting for this coming Thursday night, and that would be at six o'clock. And right now, the only, and I know this says from six to nine, but I believe our original thought was, is that we allow ninety minutes for the board work session to listen to the school leadership teams. We will allow ninety minutes to listen to public comments from our parents and community. And I'm asking you all to make a, a motion in a second and to give approval for a special call meeting. And once, if you get a motion in a second, we'll have some discussion.
So, do I have a motion to set a date for a special call meeting on March 24th? That's from six to nine for public comments. Tammy Hardy makes a motion. Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion?
Will that be held here, or?
I think we had talked earlier about just holding it in our boardroom, and if we have enough people that show up, we would just move into the gymnasium of the central office. of the central office. But we'll accommodate whoever does show up. We would like to give them the opportunity. One thing that I do want to let everyone know, of course, we will have one action item now. And I don't know, Peter, if you've got anything else construction wise, if you need next Thursday, but if you let us know, we could add that in front of it as well. But just know you've got that opportunity, okay? If you've got something that's on the burner that we need to take care of before the April meeting. But one thing that I think that we need to make sure of, the other night, I thought we had a very productive conversation with our two school leadership teams. And I think we were able to sit there and have dialogue that was civil, and we were able to discuss and talk to each other in a professional manner. And I want to let everyone know at this point in time that tomorrow, it won't be tomorrow, it will be on Monday. We will be posting some information about that special called meeting in terms of what sort of the background information. So our parents will know what the background information, where did this start? Where did it come from? So information like, for instance, this originated through my evaluation and it happened over a year ago as we started talking about the configuration of our schools. Neither principal was involved in any of these discussions until January, when I met with both of those principals at that time. And we begin the discussions in terms of looking at research, looking at pros and cons of what would, what a organizational change would mean. So I want to make that clear that this conversation started with the Board of Education and the superintendent. That's where it started at. So anything that there's any thoughts that it originated elsewhere is totally false. The second thing is, is that we will have some ground rules for this meeting. The meeting, for instance, will last 90 minutes. Anyone wishing to speak has to sign in. They've got a maximum time limit of five minutes. So as you can see, if everybody gets there and uses five minutes, you know, we'll have opportunity for quite a few people to speak, but we will not have time for a hundred people to speak. So it would be that if you have people that showing up and they've got the same conversation or the same viewpoint, you may want to have a spokesperson that would talk about what your comments or viewpoints would be. Just some other ground rules that I think that we should consider, that we want our community and our parents to know that you can speak in favor or you can speak against. We're not, we're not telling anybody that what their comments should be, and all viewpoints are welcome. But I will tell you one thing, that there will be no discussion of any school personnel. There'll be nothing said about any of our principals, any of our teachers. We will basically focus on what is best for students. So it is absolutely, as you all know, you cannot talk about personnel in an open board meeting. So anybody that begins a discussion about an individual will be cut off and they will not be allowed to finish speaking. The final thing will be that the, and the meeting will be conducted in a civil manner. We're not going to have any type of yelling, screaming, not that I expect that. But due to our stability policy, we know how it's proper to act. So that would be my only ground rules. And I would like to publish those if you all vote to have the meeting. I'd like to publish those to our website. And we'll ask both schools to publish those ground rules as well so that we can make sure that everybody knows coming into the meeting what the expectations are. So I don't know if anybody else has anything to say, but that would be it.
Any further discussion?
Well, you, like you mentioned, that might be better to have like all five of us have the same thing, but I should be the one to speak. You might want to put that on here because some people might not watch this, but they'll read it and where they should have maybe just one representation instead of 20 people saying the same thing.
One family represent.
Yeah, I thought of that, Carrie, as I was talking about these. So I was going to put that on there, but I will write it down because I do agree that needs to be on there. Because if you know five parents has the same comment about what they believe is a, a positive thing about the move, then all five of them do not have to speak because you want to be able to give opportunities for different viewpoints and different points that a parent would make. And it would be the same if somebody has a negative comment or thinks that there is a reason that we should not change school organization. Well, as a board, you don't need to hear that from 10 different people. You'll get more input that way. And it will also give you the ability to sit there and listen to more of the ideals. And it will be more of an exchange of ideals and exchange of information than it will to have 10 people that's going to get up and talk about the exact same thing. Because once it's been talked about once, I watch you guys. You take notes, you do those things. You don't have to hear it 10 times to get it, you know, to understand where they're coming from. So thank you, Carrie, that's a good point. I thought about that and that's why I mentioned it, but it was not listed. I'll list it as the third bullet under guidelines.
Do we have any further discussion? This time, I'd like to call for a vote, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. So the special call meeting will be March 24th from six to nine at central office.
And it'll probably be about six to no longer than eight, based on whether or not Peter has any information will be done. And somewhere around 90 minutes to 100 minutes.
Okay. All right. Peter, are you ready for us now?
I've got my change, but I don't mind waiting.
Uh, we're, we're finished with the action items.
So, and get off, I'll probably just pass this up to you. To, for you to pass it around. I'll use it here real quick and then I'll send it up so everybody can see.
We trust your math, Peter.
Oh, that's dangerous. But I did check and double check.
You are a certified architect.
Yeah, I, I am.
You didn't have to pass a math class to get that degree.
I did, more than one, so.
You're already be good to go.
Yeah, so if you all can go back to the agenda item and you, there was a BG1 in your backup material. On page two of that BG1, you get down to probable costs. And the top three numbers are going to change because you've decided to take the alternate. And the total construction cost went to $455,202. The constru-, the construction contingency will go to $22,760.10. And the architect engineer fee raises just a little to $45,520.20.
We just paid $300 for you to figure that BG1.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So at any rate, also, the other two numbers that will, will change are the total project cost number, which is a re-edition of those top six numbers. And that number is $531,037.42. The funds available will show capital outlay funding at $531,037.42. And then on page four, I think they asked one more time, which is total funds available. And that will go to $531,037.42. So those are the numbers that change. I'll be happy to send this up if you want to pass that around for people to take a look at. I just scribbled on it old style. And I did take a little bit of notes. I think the BG1, when it was, when it was originally done for this project, was just under $450,000. So I think you're looking at an increase of just around 80, just a little bit over $80,000.
And I will say this, guys, you've got a construction contingency of over $22,000. We really don't anticipate any problems there.
No.
Whatsoever. So really, that construction contingency will just go back into that capital funds request that can be used in Estill Springs if we don't encounter anything. The expectation is that we would not encounter anything. As you know, Ross Tarrant did that project. I think that, that area was originally scheduled to be a park.
It was, and it's been used that way for a while. So we feel like the, the subsurface is going to be something that will be good to work from.
I'll just let them look at the paperwork and then we'll call for a motion.
And, and Jeff, I will get you all, I'll do that tonight. When I get home, I'll just...
In the morning, it'll be fine.
For, for the signatures, I apologize. Okay.
I'll forward it to them tomorrow. I've got a webinar in the morning and I've got that in and I'll get it to you guys sometime around lunchtime. I'll just forward it to you. It'll be coming from my cellphone.
You're sick.
I'm actually very good. I'm coming from the gymnasium.
I froze to death yesterday, so cold. We went to the state tournament yesterday, Chaperone to school trip.
And once Carrie has a chance to look at it, I feel very confident in making the recommendation that we approve the revised BG1 in the amount of $531,037.42.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would like to call for a motion to approve the revised BG1 with alternate one for the West Irvin pavement project. Do we have a motion? Sheila Samples makes a motion, do we have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, I'd like to call for a vote at this time, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Yes, thank you very much, I appreciate your patience.
Be careful on the road.
Man, I appreciate you.
Be careful. Okay, this brings us down to our consent items. Mr. Saylor, would you like to discuss those?
Oh, thank you.
Uh, yes, real quick, I think there's nothing out of the ordinary here. You've got your minutes from February 17th and February 22nd. The treasurer's report, payment of bills. A board policy on expense reimbursements. If you remember, we changed the expense reimbursement form several months ago, but our board policy did not reflect those changes. So that board policy does now have the changes that we did back then. It's always good that your policies and procedures line up and they're the same. We have a MOA for key assets, which is a partner organization to help provide mental health services for our students. We also have an agreement with MindSci Psychological Services to help us conduct testing, psychological testing. And also, as far as our special needs students and the testing that, that we have to incur with those students, especially now that we have one of our school psychologists that has announced retirement. We're going to be posting for a school psychologist job. But as you know, I think there's currently 22 openings in the state of Kentucky for school psychologists. So if we're not able to hire somebody, we do have an agreement in place in order to provide that testing. Also, the Friskies have a continuation request with AmeriCorps, which provides a student worker at the middle school West Irvin in Estill Springs. If you ask why not the high school? High school students are really not comfortable talking to other high school students about any issues that they may be having or they don't want to approach another high school student and maybe ask for clothing. So we do not provide for a student worker there. Also, I'm glad to announce that Bluegrass Orthopedics is wanting to continue our sports medicine contract to provide an athletic trainer for the 2223 school year. You have that in front of you. And also, our MOA with our Project Home Network, which of course is a program with Markham and Wallace. We're one of the many community partners that support that Project Home Network. And they need that approval because they need that document back signed in the morning, Rebecca. So I think I sent you an email right before I came out here today to get that into them in the morning. And that is it for our consent items. And my recommendation is to approve all those consent items.
Okay. So I'd like a motion to approve all the consent items as discussed. It looks like Brian Covey makes a motion and Sheila Samples makes a second. Do we have any discussion at this time? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mr. Saylor, that brings us down to the superintendent's report.
Well, I'll go through these as quickly as I can. You have your notification of personnel actions. Mr. Norton has provided you with our school updating enrollment and attendance numbers. And we continue to pretty much chug along about where we have been. And I know that as we're getting ready to start the new school year, we're getting ready to start making contacts with students that left our school district during the school year because of some of the mandates that were given to us by state and federal government. But as we're moving into a new school year, hopefully, we do not believe that COVID is over, but we do believe that we're getting to the point that we can start living with COVID and start trying to, continue trying to provide a safe environment for our students, but continuing to move forward with those. So I know he'll be working very diligently with Ms. Peggy Bryant as we move toward a new school year. You have school fundraisers there that we just give those to you all so you can see what's going on in our schools. There's nothing worse than a fundraiser to be taking place and you don't know about it. The only time you all approve a fundraiser is that if every student in the school is participating or each grade level, let's say it that way. If every grade level is participating, you have to approve a school-wide fundraising project. But a lot of these are not school-wide. There are different classes, different clubs. But I still want you all to know what they are, just in case you get a question about them. Item D is, of course, with Bluegrass Orthopedics picking up the athletic training contract again. Markham and Wallace says, hey, we want to partner with you all as part of this athletic training program. And we want to provide continuing educational services to our parents and student athletes. And even though the last two years they've not been able to do that, they have paid for 50% of that athletic training contract. And as you can see, they're going to pay 50% of the total contract this coming year. So guys, I, I mean, I can't even begin to tell you how great our community partners are. And there's another example of Markham and Wallace stepping up and paying $42,000, I'm sorry, $4,250. We'll take $42,000 if Trina wants to give it to us. But it's $4,250, they're paying exactly half of the athletic training contract. So thank you to Markham and Wallace. COVID-19 guidance update, I can tell you this. All of our staff was tickled to death to finally start seeing smiling faces. And those masks to be gone. Now, I don't know what's going to happen with the legislature. There's a couple of different bills out there that may prevent us from being able to wear a mask if there's an outbreak or anything like that. But as it currently stands, if we had to bring masks back, we could. If we had a certain school or grade level, we could do it for the protection of our students. But I think as of right now, we've not seen a huge uptick in our numbers and hopefully that will stay the same. And we're, again, we're going to have to start trying to learn to live with COVID, just like we've learned to live with the flu and other situations in the past. So hopefully, we can be moving towards a new normal when it comes to COVID-19. Rebecca, I did share another item with our board members. If you want to include 7F, it's a non-action item. But tomorrow, we will be sending out a school calendar. So Mr. Norton, if you work with Ms. Peggy, she has an updated end of year school calendar. school calendar. And just so that everybody will know what that calendar is, we've been able to, uh, change April the 6th, which is Wednesday, uh, was going to be Wednesday before spring break. That day is now going to be a staff instructional day and the reason why it's going to be a staff day and not a student day is we're going to give our students a third day of spring break with no work. But our staff is going to work and the reason why they're going to is that because of the board work session that we had the other night and we started talking about the importance of transitions, we're going to be working with our principals here over the next few days because we want our high school to meet with eighth grade teachers at the middle school and we want to talk about transitions during that day. And the middle school is also going to be meeting with fifth graders coming from West Urban and we want to talk about those students and talk about those transitions. Estle Springs is going to work with West Urban to talk about those students that will be transitioning to third grade and based on what kind of decisions you may make here over the next few days leading up to spring break, there could be other discussions they could have during that day as well. But also, uh, the staff when it comes to kindergarten meeting with preschool to know what preschool students they are. And as we move forward in this discussion that we're going to have again on Thursday night, we need to remember that right now we've got kindergarten registration on hold and there's some other things out there that's on hold because the community is waiting for this board to make a decision. But I believe that we can have a very productive day on that Wednesday, April 6th. We won't stay there all day. We'll let our staff be able to leave a little bit early and start spring break a little early. Lord knows that they've put in a lot of additional time throughout the school year staying afterwards and everything, but that will give our students three full days of spring break and that might be, uh, a benefit to them. Uh, also it's to announce that our last day for students right now, I believe is scheduled to be like May the 11th. Is that right? Or is it 12? I'm sorry, the last day for students is May 10th. Then we're going to have two teacher workdays, uh, looking at moving into the next school year, the right closing day for the school year is the 13th, which is on a Friday. High school graduation is on Saturday night.
14th.
The 14th of May. And construction on the high school begins on Monday morning, the 16th of May. And will take place during the entire school year leading all the way up to August 17th or something like that when we go back to school this August. So that school calendar will be posted. Now that does not take board action by you all tonight. Those staff workdays are at the discretion of the superintendent. They're approved in the calendar. Early on, we could take seven staff workdays. I believe what will end up for the school year is that we will attend something like 172 in-person, uh, 162 in-person days. There was eight NTI days. Hopefully there's no more snow. And there have been seven staff workdays and that will be our 177 instructional days. So that will be posted tomorrow. Jeremy will post that to the website tomorrow after Donald and Peggy consult with him. Uh, that's it for superintendent's report.
So that brings us down to the board member forum. Does anyone have anything they would like to report?
We've got a good conference. Learn a lot.
So, so we as a board were able to go to Louisville and spend three days at the Kentucky School Board Conference and we all found it to be very productive and just lots of good, um, information out there. Okay, uh, Tammy Hardy has something to report.
Have a moment of silence for the, our Jean Arvin.
Yeah. I was going to do that when we started. We were going to do that when we started the board meeting and there were so many people here and everything. So some of you all probably know, uh, Mr. Jean Arvin, that was a long time history teacher, civics teacher, American government teacher here at the high school, passed away this week. He happens to be very close family of mine, um, and we were very saddened, um, by his loss. His family have been long-term educators and many of them are still employed, um, here in the school district. Um, if everyone could have a moment of silence, uh, we would appreciate that at this time. Okay, I'd like to thank everyone for that.
Yeah, and I would mention that Ms. Sheila mentioned about the, uh, 3D, uh, virtual dissection table that, uh, the board members saw at the, uh, conference and it is an amazing piece of equipment. Uh, we're going to look at trying to set up something here in the next couple of weeks to have the representative come in and, uh, we may very well try to purchase one for the school district and try to work our charm to see if we can, uh, try to figure out how we could be a pilot project for our area technology center. It's a, uh, very expensive, uh, piece of equipment, but I'm telling you, it was absolutely amazing what it would do and it would be a, any of our students that study nursing or any of our general science classes, uh, you can dissect animals on there, snakes, pigs, you know, the same things that used to, you would have to purchase and actually do the actual dissection. This is 3D virtual. It's a amazing piece of equipment that, and we're going to set that up here sometime next couple of weeks. I've got the contact information this week.
I have some videos of it on my phone that I can share if anyone wants to see it as well. So it was pretty amazing. I, I stumbled upon it at the trade show and I got Sheila and I was like, Sheila, you have got to see this. And I was super impressed. Um, it, it was really something. Um, Mr. Saylor, I don't know if you want to bring it up or if you want me to bring it up, but we got a regional runner-up basketball team.
We do and, uh, I tell you what, this community is very proud of our basketball team and what they were able to accomplish this year. We were picked to finish third in our district and, uh, halftime of the regional final, we were trailing 29 to 28. And I tell you, our guys, they came together as a team, uh, when a lot of people did not give them much opportunity to do anything at all. We finished the year, I believe it was 18 and 13 and, um, nobody. Uh, we thought going into the season, in all honesty, 10 wins would have been a, uh, a big win total for us. And Coach Hall, Coach Click, um, I'm trying to think, Coach Benton and.
Coach Drake.
Coach Drake, our, uh, fourth assistant coach, they did a fantastic job with those kids. Uh, several seniors on that team that will be greatly missed, uh, but we've got a pretty good core of kids coming back. So I know that they're very excited about, uh, the future of our program and, uh, uh, I was able to spend time with Coach Hall yesterday at the state tournament and, uh, I know, and, uh, also with Coach Click, they were both in the coaches lounge and we sat and talked for a while and had a really great conversation with them. So they, they did a fantastic job. Uh, one other thing tonight, we had a open house all over this campus at the middle school, at the, uh, high school and also at the ATC. A lot of Powell County parents came over tonight and visited our ATC and I'm very thankful for them. Dr. Orr was here and, uh, very appreciative of, for Dr. Orr and his support of the area technology center and, uh, very thankful for, uh, his support over the past years. We've got that program up and going. So a lot of good things going on here in, uh, the Estle County school system.
Okay, thank you for those comments, Mr. Saylor and the rest of the board. Um, do we have any public comments?
Jeremy, did we have anything?
He says one, I think.
Did it not say anything go with it?
Did it come through today? The one I received the other day was totally blank. I could not see a comment.
It's basically a comment in regards to the, um, separation of breaking up Estle Springs and West Urban. I don't think it's, uh, related to the board agenda or something that you can, uh, address more.
Uh, that is the reason why we're having the special call board meeting, uh, next coming Thursday night. So that individual, if they wish to have that question answered, they will need to attend in person.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jeremy. Um, if there's nothing further, I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn. Sheila Samples makes a motion. Do I have a second? Tammy Hardy makes a second. All in favor?